All right, call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners for October the 10th, 2023 to order. And it's good to see both of you, I mean, all of you here today. There's times I like when it's full and there's times I like when it ain't. But welcome to each of you and thanks for being participating. Any announcements?
Commissioner Shields is running about 10 minutes late. He attended the hospital celebration 100 year. He'll be here in about 10 minutes.
He told me that and I said, "Well, is anything we need to vote on?"
Hurry up, Bush.
He told me if you voted on anything to pull the fire alarm.
It seems to be involved right now. Old fire alarm trick. All right, we'll stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Commissioner Sherwood to lead us in place of allegiance.
One thing I would like to say is, as you all know about Israel, I've been watching that all day and all those babies and everything over there. It is just absolutely sickening what those people are doing, so God help us is all I can say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We don't have any public hearings tonight. And as of right now, there is no one signed up to speak at the public comment period. Does anybody have anything you want to say? Good deal. Additions to agenda?
Additions to agenda. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'm happy to have with us here Superintendent. We have School Board member Mrs. Deirdre Breeden and Colleen Strickland, the CTE coordinator. She's a jack of all trades. I've been around her long enough to know. Anyhow, Mr. Chairman, if we could, they're here tonight, Ms. Strickland, to discuss a grant opportunity for the Macon County school system. If we could add that under new business item 11E. And also to make a correction, in item number 11D, we will be discussing the addition of a planner position as opposed to code enforcement two. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, before we discuss item D, I would like to have a brief closed session to discuss personnel under general statute 143-318, 11A5.
What is that, C A?
C1. Uh, yeah, yeah. Just it will go along with C. We'll just, we'll set that right for it.
Anything else, gentlemen? Reports and presentations. Quarterly.
Make the motion when you approve your agenda.
I second it.
All the favor. Thank you, gentlemen. Reports and presentations, quarterly award presentations for first responders, community chaplains and Sheriff Redholbrook.
All right, Sheriff's not here, but just for the record, I will be doing a presentation in my capacity as a chaplain right now.
Not.
Say again?
And not as a commissioner.
And not as a commissioner. You could've said that before. So I am a, my name is Danny Antoine. I'm one of three volunteer first, uh, sorry, volunteer chaplains for six of the first responder departments here in Macon County. As chaplains, we recognize the dedication and the effort, you know, put forth towards the first responders. And we've come up with some awards that we like to give them quarterly. And tonight, we'll have the opportunity to do our second presentations on those. So as I call you guys up, hopefully everybody will be here, but we need to get this party started. First up will be Dalton Drinman from EMS.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Paige Suther. Next up for EMS, we have Chandler Ellenberg. And next up, we have Michael Garrett for State Trooper.
All right, next up, we have Alyssa Steele from Macon County Sheriff's Office of Detention. And Lieutenant Daniel Crane with Macon County Detention.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
And that's all, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny didn't leave with them, did he?
We still got corn roots on.
Danny didn't leave with them, did he?
We still got corn roots on.
We still have a corn.
I run on you. He ran on you.
I think it might be a little bit.
Give me a little time there, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Was it saying you were waiting on him?
Thank you.
No, Garrett, it's the 100 year celebration of Angel Medical Center.
100 years.
You remember it open, don't you?
All right, take these notes good, though.
First baby born there.
I was born Haywood County.
Okay.
Out around the chicken house, I think. Thank you for.
It has been a while.
Yes.
Thank you for that, Danny. All business. Discussion regarding Franklin High School public review of schematic drawings. County Manager Derrick Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and happy to have Mr. Paul Boni with LS3P, the architect that's been working with us at the Franklin High School project here with us tonight. This is just a reminder included in your agenda packet and we have copies for the media as well. We want to get this publicized as best we can. We're having a community input session on October the 19th, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, at the Robert, at the Robert C Carpenter Building for the Franklin High School project. We are, you know, we have said all along, this is a, a community project and the architect has been adamant about having the input of the teachers and the staff at Franklin High School and the public as well because, as we've all discussed, it is a significant expenditure that has a large impact on the community. So we're anxious to hear what you have to say. I know that the Board of Commissioners, as the school board, has been very adamant about wanting to get the public involved in this project. And so this is an opportunity for, for the public to come and provide us comments and answer any questions and that they might have. So look forward to that. And Mr. Boni, would you like to add anything?
Well, I think, Mr. Rowland, you've summed that up very well and it's something that we really believe in and work hard at. And so we're looking forward to having as many people as we can. It will not be a formal, formal presentation. We want to have a discussion with each of the people that come and we'll flip through the drawings or whatever stuff that they want to see. They can ask us any questions and we'll, our team will be here to answer any questions and just be available for those public comments. So we look forward to doing that and we think it's a great forum for people to come out and, and share their ideas and, and listen to some of our ideas and just have a really good discussion about it. So it's not a, like I said, we're not planning on a formal, formal presentation. We just want to have a discussion with as many people as we can get out there. I hope we pack the place. And I'll stay there all night until their questions are answered. So if there are any other, anybody else want to?
What will be on display?
We'll have, we'll have the drawings displayed. We'll have boards of the renderings, boards of the floor plan, boards of the, I'll go slow. Didn't write it down. Boards of the floor plans, boards of the site plan, any interior renderings that we have of some of the interior spaces. And it will be a, you know, so that everybody can get a real grasp on this because this is, this is their school. This is the community school. This is something that is a generational project for this area. And so it's, go ahead.
What about a virtual tour?
Well, we talked about that. And, you know, we can, we can, you know, Jamie offered that up, put on the goggles. So we'll see.
Think you can do that?
I think we can do that. I mean, it's a cool thing to do. As long as they aren't. But yes, Josh, we can do that.
What's the timing on that again, please?
October 19th, 4 o'clock PM to 8 o'clock PM. And that's a drop in.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll, we'll be there until anybody who has a question, has finished their questions, we'll be there all night if they want us to. Yes, ma'am.
That's a good segue into our next item.
Yes, sir.
Highland School renovation slash pre-K project update. Senior Vice President, Mr. Paul Boni.
Well, thank you, sir. As you know, the bids on that project were significantly over the budget. And so we've been working on that to try to figure out a way to order some of the materials that are long lead times, like the heating and air conditioning systems are 20 weeks out. The windows were, were a long lead time. And so we've looked at how we can best move this project along. And it's something we want to do. I know the school board is anxious to, to move this project along and I know you all are. And so what we're trying to do is figure out the best way to deliver this project that gives you all the most options. One of the ways that Emily and I have thought about and talked about is to award this project to a firm of, that y'all would pick and the school board would pick, in the realm of CM at risk. That means a construction manager at risk. And so we, you can pick that person. It's not based on price. It's based on qualifications, just like design firms. And then they are, we give them the budget. We then get involved with them. We do the drawings and, and we talk with them about the project. And they come back with options and they are in charge of the bidding. Where we had, you know, a hard time frankly, getting bidders, smaller bidders, that can get bonded for public work. And they have to have a payment bond and a performance bond as a general contractor in order to do that. And so some people just don't understand how all that works. But it's North Carolina law. I don't have an option. And so I have to adhere to that. And so the CM at risk would be responsible for the money. And that, and we would work together with them, but it gives us the option to go ahead and take bids on some of these longer lead items, look at the budget, make sure they're in the budget, and then go on and order those so that we can get ahead of the inflation curve, which is still about 8% a year. That's a lot. It's down from a couple of years ago, but it's still significant in a project like this. So we're trying to get ahead of that curve and be able to do that. We can advertise for the CM at risk. We would have interviews, just like you do with architects. Y'all would be invited to that. And, and then you would feel comfortable with what they said and, and if you do, and then we would move ahead with the project. If you don't feel comfortable with it, we'd just go back out for bids, just like we did before, but I think you'd probably have the same result. So what I'm asking for tonight is authorization to go ahead and have either Derrick or the school board, however we will do that, send out an RFP for, or RFQ, request for qualifications for CM at risk contractors and see what kind of interest we get.
And Paul, what is the, the scope of this project? Is it a, the Highlands Middle School renovation or is it the Highlands pre-K and middle school renovation?
What I would recommend is the scope of their work be broken down into phases. And so the first phase would be the mechanical and the windows. Second phase would be the Highlands, I guess, the pre-K building. And then to follow that would be the, would be the renovations. And put, but I would try to put it all together. And I would get a price so that y'all know exactly where you're heading with this and exactly how much money you're getting ready to spend up there. And then we've got the Macon County track thing too that is a whole nother, is a whole nother discussion.
So this would be the county issuing this RFQ?
Yes, because we have the repair and renovation money is involved in this project already.
Right.
Is it going to call for a revision in the repair and renovation application?
No, sir. I've, I've spoken with Nathan Mountie at school planning and he said that money comes to y'all and it is not encumbered in any way, but it, it is, once y'all vote to encumber it, then that is encumbered. But you, you would get the money and you would continue to get those payments. I think they're quarterly maybe more.
Well, the money is encumbered, or in my eyes it is. We've applied for $697,730. $63,430 of that was for planning and design. So they have kind of earmarked that and encumbered that. But the remainder of that was intended to do the Highlands Middle School renovations, the HVAC, the roof, the windows, the flooring. And just for your information, like Paul said, it does deposit quarterly. Our current balance is $754,993.2. But of course, that does include what we had earmarked previously, you know, the 634.3 and the 634.30. So that's what's in our balance today. So we do have at least a chunk of money to go towards the project.
But the, but the earmark is your earmark, not the state's earmark.
Well, we made application to the state and said we want to do this project within this budget.
Yeah.
So I think that's what Derrick's question was. Since we've already made application and they've approved our application, do we have to amend that application to, for changing the scope of the project or ask for more funds? Because they don't give funds unless you make application for said funds.
I know. But Nathan said that once you get the money, that it's not, like you would earmark it for fees or whatever for the project, but they, you could do what you want. But I can, I can get him, I know, you don't believe me.
I don't believe you, sorry.
But I'm just telling you, I talked to him and that's what he said. But I'm happy, I'm happy to do that and I'm happy to work with you however you want.
I mean, I think it's flexible. I mean, it's, it is our money and it's, as long as it falls within the parameters, they're going to approve it. But I'm just saying, a year ago, we made application for this much money. So I think we may just have to amend that application or something.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I'm happy to do it any way you want to do it, Laura. I promise you.
And you're asking tonight for?
Approval to have the school board send out an RFP, an RFQ.
It would be the county.
The county.
Send out a request for qualifications.
Request for qualifications to have us have a CM at risk on the Highlands project so we can move that project forward. And then we would come back to y'all if we need, when we need some additional funds.
Just as another FYI, so, you know, we've, we've started out with the two separate projects, right? You've got the Highlands Middle renovations and then you've got the Highlands, everybody calls it Highlands pre-K, but really the bulk of that money is to add in addition to the middle school building, unless the plans have changed for, in the last couple of years. But anyway, so we do, we did budget the $165,377 for the Highlands pre-K project. And that was to cover design development and construction documents. So we do already have some money earmarked for that. We do have the money kind of earmarked in the repair and renovation fund. But of course, putting these together, you're going to come back with a pretty, you know, sizable budget, you know, both combined.
But initially, the renovation project was, came in at 1.2 or something?
Yeah, it came in like a million, 184, I believe. Yeah.
It was budgeted at like 700 or something.
It was the 634.3 was the budget number.
Those are almost double.
Yeah.
So is that what we're specifically talking about, your CM at risk?
Yeah. And what we're talking about is, is we're trying to get that number down.
Trying to get that number down?
Down.
And the windows, do you have any idea what the doors, the heat, the HVAC and the windows cost wise?
Not at this time. We would like to have this firm onboard for the discovery of a whole lot of those questions.
Questions, gentlemen?
I think since it is on the agenda as all three phases of this, I guess, the two phases here. And we have approved the, the funding for the renovation, but now we've got it linked together with the entire project. And we had this discussion some time ago about the renovations, yes, the phase two and three of the design schematic and construction documents, but we never considered to go forward with the entire project because my folks in Highlands, when we had a meeting, they asked for this to be designed so they could seek private funding. So I'm a little confused about.
Let me, let me help with that. So when we get the CM, the CM at risk, we're going to have certain phases, just like you outlined. And they are not going to go forward with any of those phases and we can terminate that contract at any time. And so we would have those certain phases, just like you did, and then we would be back with the cost estimates for those phases for y'all to consider. And so there's no, there's no guarantee, but there's no, you're not committing to the larger project. We're just trying to, we're trying to move it forward so that we can get some of these long lead items already ordered, which we have money for, and get them installed when they come in. It's the fastest way to do that.
It's just a matter of the difference in the, the total cost of the renovation project.
That's right.
When you're thinking the CM's going to, that's going to be less than the 1 point.
Well, what we're hoping is that the CM's going to bring in some subs that they are used to, you know, that will, will give us a better spread on the, on the subcontractors that we have, because the more subcontractors you have, the better the price. That's all really.
It doesn't cost us anything for you to issue RFQ?
No, sir.
I'd like for you, I'd like for you to make me feel better about the CM at risk. I mean, for some reason, I just don't have a good taste with CM at risk. And my interpretation is, is generally like a cost plus. You hire the firm, they, they just hire their own subs, they hand you the bill and you pay it. And essentially, there's contingencies in every budget, but there really isn't an overall budget. Can you help me feel better about that?
Um, yes, maybe. The CM at risk project, most of the large school projects we're doing, the school systems we're working for are using the CM at risk process. Because they have found it to be a, a good way to move forward with the project because we're working with them hand in hand from the get-go and they know what the budget is. And, and they're, you know, continuing to refine the cost estimates and, and get us people on that, get us subcontractors that fall within that budget. We have had, I, I, there is no way to quantify, Mr. Young, that this is cheaper. Because you never bid it straight up, single prime or CM at risk, because you pick one or the other. So I can't really tell you that it's cheaper or not cheaper. Because they have found it to be a good way to move forward with the project. Because we're working with them hand in hand from the get-go and they know what the budget is. And they're, you know, continuing to refine the cost estimates and get us people on that. Get us subcontractors that fall within that budget. We have had, I, there is no way to quantify, Mr. Young, that this is cheaper. Because you never bid it straight up, single prime or CM at risk. Because you pick one or the other. So I can't really tell you that it's cheaper or not cheaper. But what you describe in some instance, I have found that, and again, the reason we're recommending this is to move the thing forward as quickly as possible. And be able to order those items and then get them installed, the long lead items that are already authorized. So that's why we're trying to move this forward with the CM at risk process. Because they can then order those and look after them. Now, I can't stand here tonight and tell you it's cheaper. I wish I could. And I can't stand here tonight, I can tell you, in my experience, it's been better. And it's less, school boards pick it a lot of times because there's less conflict. Lawyers like it better because there's less conflict among the subs and that kind of thing. Because of the way they're able to, they're able, in fact, to, you know, kind of work with subs that they've worked with before. So I can't tell you honestly, Judge, this is, I can tell you, in our experience with larger projects, it's been better.
Well, you use the term cheap. I'm not looking for cheap.
No, well, I may have misspelled.
Well, single prime, somebody turns in a hard estimate.
Yeah.
And that's their estimate.
That's right.
But on this, what's our other?
CM at risk.
CM at risk, it's more or less, you got the job, just do it, send me a bill.
Well, not really. I mean, they have a fee that is set. So a general contractor on a single prime bid, it's gonna have a fee worked into the bid. You just never know what it is on a single prime bid. On the CM at risk, they do have a fee, general overhead and profit and insurance. And that is then what they get out of, they don't get anymore. And then it's a matter of adding up all the subcontract.
So if you hand us a budget, that's the budget? And that's the number not to exceed, or does it heavily fluctuate?
We would get a GNP, which is a guaranteed maximum price, when they're ready, after they have taken bids with their subcontractors. And that is, that is the risk part for them. And it was just how we, so this was the easiest way to, I mean, a way to move this.
I can understand it being easy, I mean, because of the isolated location. Who sets that fee and do we negotiate that fee?
You negotiate the fee.
With the architect?
No, no, no. You negotiate it with the CM and you have total control over that. And if you don't like the fee that they give you and the proposal they give you, you go to the second guy, girl. Second company. But.
But tonight, you're asking us to solicit an RFQ or CM at risk and see what we have, what we have turn up?
That's right.
Now, that fee's not gonna be in that RFQ.
No, but we're gonna, we're gonna go to that, once we select somebody, then we would go to that next step. And we would know what that fee is.
It's conceivable, at the end of the day, whatever option we choose, we're still gonna be six or seven hundred dollars short.
Correct. Conceivable.
So that's the key is, yeah, we could do an RFQ, but we still gotta figure out what we're gonna get for the rest of the money.
That's right. And how much is what we would come back with and tell you. But we've already proven that there's not enough money budgeted in this project to do the project. And we're happy just to redesign it and put it out for bids. If y'all would rather us do that and not mess with the CM, we would be happy to do that.
I think we kind of fell into this thing, we thought we had the funding to do it.
Yeah.
I know the schools, the previous superintendent had some funds, sharpened me up here a little bit.
It's the repair and renovation funds that I was talking about, we've made application for last year ago. And we had the estimate that the school put into that application was apparently not enough.
And so that was the estimate we got. And then we moved on.
Are we talking about renovations or the pre-K and the whole project?
This is talking about the whole project.
That's what.
Yeah.
Which is.
But again, you can take it in chunks. And so we could go back to just the renovation thing. And we could redesign it, try to get as much money out of it as we can.
That's where we were, because we kind of put the pre-K to bed for a few weeks.
That's right.
Because that was, what's the number on that now?
I can't remember.
At one time, I've seen bids for the whole project at about eight point six million, I think. For the whole.
It's about.
It's about five.
Five million.
But that doesn't, that doesn't account for the time lapse and.
Yeah. Well, I looked at, y'all hired the group up in Highlands, the, I can't remember what they're called, and hires the.
Novus.
And I looked at that today before this meeting, it was eight point six million.
Where you started.
For the whole thing. And that would be architect fees, furniture fixtures and equipment, cost escalation, et cetera.
They took that down because they changed the scope a little bit. And that got it down, at one point, it was around five. It had gotten as low as four point eight. I'm assuming at this point, five and a half.
And that goes, oh, I'm sorry. That goes back to the same thing I was talking about earlier. The whole idea behind getting into phase two and phase three of this project is to take this group from Highlands and say, okay, here it is, here are the plans. Here's the construction documents. It's gonna cost X amount of dollars. Where do we go to from here? So there's private funds that they're going to be seeking without having a number to seek. We don't know how to go forward.
Well, we know how to go forward with that scenario. Because we'll design it. You've already contracted with us to do that. And so rather than doing this whole CM thing, because I get, there's some apprehension there. I mean, I understand it, especially on a small project. Because I was one of the ones that wrote the CM law in Raleigh in two thousand and something. And the original CM law was intended for projects that were fifteen million and above. And now what you're seeing is people are squishing it down to projects like this. Because they like the way it's delivered, because they have less hassle with it. But I am happy to finish our contract, get a number, do those renderings and all the stuff that look nice, and help raise the money. If that would be a better way for y'all to move on.
Well, if we were to pass an RFQ, are those qualifications time sensitive? Do we have to act on that in the next ninety days, hundred twenty days?
You don't have to act on them at all. I mean, but, I mean, if you just don't want, if you'd rather not do it.
Yeah, just let's say so and let's not, don't put my stamp in the hard word of doing.
If the feeling of the board is.
If we have the feeling to do it.
Yeah, if the feeling of the board is, we're just not comfortable with this CM at risk thing, that's okay. We'll finish what we got and we'll come knocking on your door with the drawings.
Hillary, what, I mean, you popped in, I mean, what? I haven't heard really from the group that I talked to several months ago. I mean.
Well, there's a lot going on on two different tracks when you look at both of these projects. The biggest thing that we're concerned about is actual procurement of the windows, the HVAC systems, and the time lapse that that takes. That's where LS3P kind of came to the table, to the liaison meeting with this proposal for CM at risk. Because they can actually order those things as well as store. So they can order and store. Because what's gonna happen is if we wait, then this thing could get pushed even nine months, another year down the road. And these renovations really need to be happening right now. Like there are window issues, there's HVAC issues, there's roofing issues. Now that we're pushing up toward the end of the year, where I sit, what makes the most sense to me is the design phase two and three to get to construction documents with the entire pre-K project is gonna be completed here pretty soon. Then we got this repair and renovation that we know we need. If we could, instead of hiring a CM at risk, we could bid the entire thing together, which I think is pretty cost effective and more appealing. So you're actually gonna get bids back on that as opposed to just the renovations. Or with the CM at risk, they could go ahead and get those things procured, like the windows and the things for the renovations that we need, and then be on hand and on site when it's time to have those construction documents go out. So it's kind of a win either way. But as a taxpayer, it makes sense to me to attack all this together. Because it is one thing, and plus the ability to have less cooks in the kitchen, per se, on campus when it comes time to get the job done and to do the entire thing. The way we've got it phased out is we could feasibly get, I think, let's see, we walked through this with Emily last week. Between this coming summer and next summer, the doors would be ready to open for everything, I think if I'm doing my math right, in the school year starting twenty-five, twenty-six. Because next year is twenty-four, twenty-five. So that gives us two summers and then a permanent school year to get other work done. Which is a pretty good timeline, I think. We wanna kind of get these things rolling before the summer so we don't forfeit another summer. In regards to independent funding for the pre-K, that's not something that's guaranteed. I know when we had our meeting in Highlands, that wasn't something I heard from the crowd, that people were saying, having the construction documents in hand and having a full plan is something we can present to a community, such as what we've done with Franklin High School. Maybe we'll find an angel donor to write a check for Franklin High School. I mean, you never know. But I do feel like holding any of this up doesn't do the project any good either way. And right now, the community, the entire community, as well as folks like potential funders or people who are interested, do not like to see this held up anymore than.
All right, thank you.
So where we're at?
Well, I mean, the biggest thing is we have, we have six hundred forty thousand dollars or whatever it is for this renovation. And we're not even close to having funding for the renovation, so.
So are you saying to Mr. Boni to get the price on the windows and stuff and you have to do however?
I've got a price somewhere in all this paper.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's.
We got that from Beverly Grant in Asheville. And they've been very cooperative with us.
I mean, let me ask this, we've already solicited two single prime RFQs, right? And we haven't had any luck, am I right? So it's not gonna hurt anything to go ahead and bid the CM at risk. We already have six hundred ninety-seven thousand, we can at least see the bid. To me, mechanical windows, roof and floor aren't options, those are have to's. I don't have a problem, you know, making a motion that we, I'll just do that right now. Let's, let me make a motion that we solicit an RFQ. Mr. Boni, with CM at risk or the Highlands project?
For the Highlands Phase One.
Highlands Phase One, Roger. That's in the form of a motion.
A second. A second.
Further discussion, gentlemen?
And the fees was for the windows and?
Essentially for the windows, the mechanical system, the roof and the floor. And they'll come back and they'll have a price. And it will exceed the six hundred and some thousand, but it won't be millions. And so we will attack that at the time. And in the meantime, we're gonna finish the drawings on the pre-K. And so we can go, and if your conversations come out, or at least we'll know what that is gonna be in the market.
And where you're gonna store it? Well, we've not bought it yet.
And that'll be a CM problem, which is what we want.
Okay. Can I make one quick comment if I'm not out of order before you vote? So the Beverly Grant was a million, one eighty-four, one ninety-five. You back out the six thirty-four three that we've already been approved for. There's an additional hundred twenty thousand, six ninety-three in the R and R fund. The difference is four twenty-nine, two oh two. So I'm just throwing that out there for consideration. Leverage, you know, four hundred twenty-nine thousand against one point two million. You know, you're getting about sixty-seven percent grant funding, about thirty-three percent county dollars. But, you know, if y'all wanna move forward with CM at risk.
The easiest thing to do.
What does that CM at risk, what are you gonna do? I mean, RFQ.
Two different things. I was just throwing this out here, that based on the bid we received before and the funding available in the R and R fund, if the county wanted to move forward, and I know their bid's void at this point, we'd have to come up with four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars.
And to piggyback, Laurie, on what you're saying, is this not, I mean, it sounds like the scope is very similar, if not the same scope that we received that one point eight million dollar bid back on.
The one point one eight four, it is, yeah. This is all the same scope.
So it's the same scope.
The Highlands Middle School renovations is the same scope, yeah.
And it will, and, you know, like you say, there's no way to know, and I don't have a crystal ball, but that one point one eight, we're not gonna do a CM at risk. And that one point one eight is not gonna come back at less.
Here's what.
Than one point one eight.
Here's what I would do, if I may, Mr. Chairman, here's what I would do. Based on all the comments that I've heard, Laurie's right. You're leveraging four hundred thousand, basically, to get a million two. If I can get Beverly Grant to go back to their bidders and say, we wanna keep, we wanna hold your bid for this amount of time that you've been, you know, not in the bid. We could hold the bid and if y'all would authorize the four hundred thousand, we could go ahead and complete that first phase of the project for that amount. And you're leveraging four hundred thousand against a million two. I think that's a pretty good deal.
That's not a good leverage.
Why not? I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it.
Well, we got into this thing, we were kind of led to believe that, hey, this, the funding is in place here for this.
Yes, sir.
Then all of a sudden, as you're well aware, it's twice what was allocated. Now we're being urged into correcting.
I was just following up on what Laurie.
I know, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
It's not too sense.
Yeah.
To me, it seems like a good investment.
But we're still trying to get a track, high school, you know, there's a lot of things going on.
I know, I know.
And I feel like we're a funding arm for the Board of Education a lot of times. That's most of our expenditures now, but, and it's needy, I mean, it's a worthy cause. But I think the motion, we have a motion on the floor, not disagreeing with what you.
You wouldn't, I didn't hear a motion on the second one.
Oh, we had a second on RFQ for the windows and the.
CM at risk or?
The CM, now, you gotta understand, to me, the CM at risk is the whole project, right? When we put it out there, we're gonna say this whole big project. Now, we may break it into segments. And I guess maybe in our, whatever we put out there, we've gotta make that clear and apparent that this is for the whole big gamut, but we're gonna break it into phases. Because to really get a goodbye, that's what I'm hearing. And correct me if I'm wrong, to get a goodbye on this CM at risk, you've got to conclude the whole thing.
And you're going to guarantee that for the entire project? So no other contractor could come into it?
No, no, any subcontractor that wants to come in and bid it under the CM.
Right.
But, but.
They would serve as a general contractor, they would come in like Paul said.
Why don't we?
Cost plus fixed fee with that guarantee.
Why don't we not vote on that?
And just allow you to go ahead and finish the construction documents?
We've got a motion on the floor in a second, so it has to.
We're still in discussion.
Yeah.
Can I clarify the motion? It was for the CM at risk for the Highlands School renovation, phase one. Is that what your motion was?
I feel like what was proposed to us was the project. And I want the emphasis on phase one, so I think I wanna break down the whole thing.
Okay.
And we'll see where we're at.
So the motion was for phase one, not the whole project?
Well, I feel like they're gonna break it down. Am I wrong in saying that, Paul?
We're absolutely gonna break it down.
Is it gonna cost the county anymore for them to hand us an estimate? I mean, she's saying eight, she's saying four, she's saying?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna clarify all of that stuff the next time you see me. We're gonna come back with a number.
Look, we've kicked this can for almost two years now. Looking, they're looking for a roof, windows and doors up there. And I don't know what else to do, I mean, it's not getting any cheaper.
I'm trying to get them roof, windows and doors.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too.
As fast as we can.
We're chasing tails right here, but we've sent out two single-prime bids, hadn't had any luck, so here's a CM at risk. Maybe they'll buy here. It's not costing us anything, maybe some admin fees.
So the motion's for Phase One?
I feel like it's the project, but I want it broken down into phases.
And you've got three phases that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take that.
You've got three phases?
Yes, sir.
You start with the mechanical first? Mechanical, windows, roof, and some floor.
And homeless, too? I'm sorry, Paul, could you give those to me, the three phases again?
The three phases are the mechanical, the roof, and the windows. The other is, the second phase is the renovation, and the third phase is the bigger pre-K addition.
Pre-K is the third phase?
First, oh, no, second phase.
Second phase.
Mechanical, windows, doors, roofs, floors, Phase One. Second phase, pre-K, third phase, renovation.
All right. Go ahead.
So just one more time. So when you do that in phases, it's still the same contractor that's subcontracting this workout. So there's no other option after Phase One of moving forward with this with a different general contractor?
We could, we could then extend their contract to, or we could cancel their contract.
If we weren't happy with the work, we could fire them, right?
Yeah.
If we weren't happy, we could fire them.
I don't know, I mean, they're going to come back, and it's going to be somewhere close to Laurie's 400,000. It may be less because they're value engineering some things. We can, we can take some things out, but in this...
We don't have anybody in Macon County that installs windows and flooring and roofing.
We don't have anybody that wants to bid on it. It's been advertised, this'll be the third time.
They don't have the bond money.
It's the bonding, there's any bonds.
They don't have the bonding. And so we got to have the bond to meet the state law. That's just a fact.
And we're out of the money to pay for it, so we're...
And we can't split it, because then you're evading purchase and provisions. You could try to split it out.
So why don't you let, I'll, well...
Go ahead.
Go ahead and tell us, we're in discussion. Tell us what you...
We'll go ahead and put out a RFP for the Phase One, the windows and mechanical, and we'll see what we get. So you was interested, see how that is. Did you say RFP or RFQ?
Q.
I don't know.
Smas or quote, I don't know.
It's going back to your saying motion.
We're going to handle that, and then we're going to come back, and we're going to say, yes, you know, we're going to either recommend them or not.
You clarified on the motion?
No. My motion is for a bid CM at risk at Highlands School, three different phases broken out into phases.
Correct.
That's the bid, that's my motion.
So we solicit, we solicit one RFQ for a CM at risk.
Yes, ma'am.
But in there, say, this is all, this is what we want to do, but we want to have a phased approach, right?
And Phase One is going to be listed as 630...
Phase One is going to be what we've been soliciting RFQs for for the past two years.
Several at any point.
So that's your motion?
Yeah.
Somebody seconded it, I think.
Yeah, we got a second.
Yeah.
We've got a motion to second on the floor, gentlemen. All the favor sign if I raise your right hand, say aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Paul, you're in Charlotte for that?
You will now have an apples-to-apples comparison of a project that's been hard bid and a project that's been CM at risk bid.
No.
You said you'll see us next year.
Yeah, I mean, now, we would go, yeah, no, we would, we would go on and get that Phase One thing done as quickly as possible. So it'll take us about, you have to give them a couple of weeks to reply, and then a couple of weeks to...
Either way, y'all are going to have to put money with it, I tell you.
Yeah, it's not going to come back less than 1.1.
This Highlands Middle School renovations, you're still going to have to put money with it.
And that's my rub. We were misled on that, and no, no more on...
It's not going to come in at 634,000, I'm sorry to say.
We're getting a free estimate here.
It's very bare bones, what we're doing. We're not doing anything fancy up there.
When you're, when you're talking about...
It's just needed improvements, upgrades, you know.
When you're talking about bonding, there are unlimited builders in Macon County that, I mean, we all have to have bonding companies, even in landscaping businesses, is that not?
They can respond, if they got the tickets, they can respond.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of bond is required.
It's a performance bond, and a performance and payment bond.
Yeah, if they get so good.
Which you've got to have a bonding company that guarantees that if you go through, they're going to pay, they're going to pay off all this stuff, and it takes a lot of money for that.
Most states and DCs don't have bonds.
Well, no, but you've, I mean, there's tons of...
It's two different things.
Unlimited builders here, so...
But the unlimited builder is, is two different things.
And they don't want to mess, I know, we're not going to mess with bonding. I'm not, I'm a contractor, I won't mess with bonding.
They just think it's too complicated.
All right, gentlemen?
Okay.
I guess you'll be back?
I'll be back.
We'll see you on the 19th, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let me know if there are any other...
I think I aired on the adjustments to an approval of agenda, we're going to table 11A. Should that have been made?
Uh, yes, we'll go ahead and strike through that.
I should have done that on the adjustment. 11A is tabled till November. Under new business, item B, discussion and consideration of bond agreement with Tiny Mountain Estates subdivision, planning director as of now, Joe Allen.
Did you say the last name? It's probably the last name. Thank you, guys. Equity Trust's company custodian, FBO, which is Patrick Corkyell, wishes to enter into a bond agreement with Macon County in the amount of $22,714.56, which is 125% of the estimated cost to pave sections of this subdivision road that exceeds the maximum grade allowed under our subdivision ordinance. And if any of you guys have been down Calway lately, up Lethem Gap Road, that's that new subdivision they've been working on for a year and a half or two years down there.
All right. Please of the board.
Chairman, I make a motion, we return $27,714.57 in the bond.
No, we're going to get it.
We're going to get it.
He's not asking to release the bond?
No, he's asking to, of us to...
To approve the bond?
To approve it, to approve it, get into a bond agreement with him. We don't have any of his money yet.
Well, I'd like to correct that. All right, let's see here. So we're asking for approval of the subdivision, is that right?
He's, he's asking for us, he's asking for Macon County to enter into a bond agreement with him, to accept that bond agreement in lieu of him paving the roads as of now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to release the bond after the work was performed. So all he has to do is pave the roads. Everything's in grade with the planning, the planning board. As liaison to the planning board, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into a bond agreement with Tiny Mountain Estates in the amount of $22,714.56.
Motion.
Laurie, that will be certified check cash.
A motion, second, for discussion. What do these folks tell, what's their response when you tell them this?
Uh, this gentleman and a lot of these guys are okay with it because they, they understand that they're going to have to have this paved for people to make good use. It's pretty steep, that's pretty steep if you guys even buy that, that's pretty steep. But he don't want to do it now because he's pulling his sign, he homes up in there, and he's going to tear the pavement all to pieces. And so, I mean, this, it's work, it works out fine for him, you know, and this is, you know, 22,000, a lot of these are more than that, they're saving you 80, $100,000, that's a different conversation, these people are, and if they're putting up that type of money, you're, we're handcuffed them a little bit, sure enough, if they're out of their own pocket.
All right, gentlemen, a motion, second, further discussion. All the favor sign if I raise your right hand. Thank you, Joe. Item C, under new business, discussion and consideration of renewal of the master service agreement with Little T Broadband, Academy Manager Derek Rollins.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, last year, the board entered into an agreement with Little T Broadband Services and Jeff Lee. As you'll recall, we have a master agreement that just basically keeps Mr. Lee, it, no money is involved with this agreement, this master agreement, just spells out essentially that Little T is going to act as our broadband consultant, work with the broadband committee, and anytime we have projects come up, this master agreement contemplates entering into a sub, a sub-agreement that, where money is involved. But that's only when a project comes about. The proper data with it, because of Jeff Lee and due to his work, and now that that project's moving forward, and other projects are on the horizon, we do need to renew this master agreement, just to have that expertise on staff and on standby for any project that might arise. In the near future, what will be coming up is the oversight of the fiber project in Nantahala. Jeff will be the county's eyes and ears. He will coordinate with Bossum West on the project. He will coordinate the installation of the fiber to all the county facilities, make sure all the equipment's right, so on and so forth. Monies for that are included in the FY '24 budget, and they're included in the economic development budget, as broadband is, is a primary driver of economic development. So those funding, the funding related to that sub-agreement will be included, is included in the FY '24 budget. But again, this is just that master agreement that enables us to do that. No money is involved with this, and it's a renewal of the current agreement.
Please of the board.
I make a motion that we approve the master service agreement. Do I need to say for Jeff Lee?
Uh, no, just the master services agreement as presented.
As presented.
Second.
Got a motion, second, further discussion. All the favor sign if I raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Manager?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, before we discuss this item, I'd like to call for a brief closed session, as I stated earlier.
Under?
Under General Statute 143-318, 11A5.
Hang with us, we'll get back in a couple of days.
No, it won't take long.
No, it's gonna be long.
Thank you all for hanging around. And to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, if we could, as we all know, the economy here in Macon County is directly tied to the building industry. If you look, it's about a quarter billion dollar industry here in Macon County that contributes to the economy each year. And as we look at the Building Inspections Department currently, since 2018, we've seen a 30% increase in the number of building permits issued. That number through September 30th of this year is 1,903 building permits that this department has issued. And when I'm talking about building permits, that is the permit that you have satisfied the inspections necessary to receive that permit. And the number of inspections for a residential permit can range anywhere from 20 to 30, while the number of inspections required for something like a New Engels can range anywhere from 95 to 150. So with that, with that 1,903 building permits issued through September 30th of this year, you're talking about thousands of inspections that are being conducted by the individuals in this department. Currently, in the Macon County Planning and Permitting Development Department, we have eight employees. We have a lead building inspector. We have a planning director. We have a building inspector that also serves as a trainer for new building inspectors that come on. We have two building inspectors, aside from the building inspector/trainer. And we have a fire inspector III that is capable of conducting level one building inspections as well. In addition to those inspectors, we have two clerical staff. Right now, what we're seeing with the number of inspections that are coming in, it's having some adverse impacts on this department that could certainly trickle into that, again, that quarter of a billion dollar economic driver here in Macon County. And we want to try to avoid that at all means possible. This department is one of the most efficient departments that this county operates. And just to kind of highlight that, when you look at the number of employees in Macon County for planning permitting and development and code enforcement, we have eight employees, as I mentioned. If you look at our neighbor, Jackson County, they have 21 employees within the code enforcement and planning department. So Macon County operates very efficiently, and certainly Jackson County might do some things differently than we do, some things we don't. But when you look at the overall budget and the overall number of employees, there are 21 in Jackson County to eight in Macon County, just shows you some level of the efficiency that we operate with, going back to those 1,903 permits and thousands of inspections that were conducted as a result of those. So what we're going to be requesting here tonight is the planning director duties. Currently, the planning director oversees all the planning, the planning board, code enforcement related to land use ordinances, erosion control, watershed, floodplain, building inspections, and conducts fire inspections as well. So with the addition of the planner position, what we're going to do is that planner would conduct all the planning, the planning board, code enforcement, erosion control, watershed, and floodplain. They would conduct all those disciplines that are currently being conducted by the planning director. That planning director will be reclassified to a plan reviewer code enforcement officer three. And so going back to those permits, the primary duties of the reclassed position that was previously the planning director will now be plan review, permit entry, code enforcement, and building inspections. They will give us another inspector out there, more boots on the ground to conduct those building inspections, aside from, it will allow for another set of trained eyes, a qualified and experienced individual to focus on the complex task of these plan reviews that are coming in. With the commercial buildings, the multimillion dollar homes that we're seeing come through, the plan review is much more complex, takes a trained professional, and it takes somebody that is dedicated and can dedicate the majority of their time to that. Also, the fire inspector III position, currently, that is, that position since this department has assumed fire inspections in fiscal year '22, so far, that fire inspector is only able to dedicate about 10% of their time to conducting these fire inspections. 90% of the time of this position currently is dedicated to these building inspections that we're seeing this increased volume in. So with that being said, it's going to give numerous benefits to this department. Once the planner is added, that fire inspector can then, that will flip-flop. He can begin doing 90% fire inspections, 10% building inspections, as we intended for that position to do all along. So the budget impact, the creation of this planner position at grade 30 will increase the budget in this department by about $70,000 annually. Funding for this position will be gained by increasing the revenue in the budget related to interest on investments by the same amount. So as you'll recall, the interest on investment revenue source, we reduced that in budget discussions by $812,000 for the purposes of lowering the budget amount at budget time. But the interest on investment money is going to come in as we see the rates continue to go up, the interest rates continue to go up. It produces greater yield on the investments that Macon County has. And so as those, we know that that's fluctuating, as the interest rates go down, so will the interest on investment revenue. But it's not going to happen this year. And so that $812,000 that we reduced the budget by, that this $70,000 of funding will come from, will actually, again, it is going to be there this year, and if we do not spend it, it will simply go into fund balance and further increase our fund balance. So for the remainder of this year, it makes sense to go ahead and move that money from this revenue source. The, as far as sustainability, if that money's, what if it goes away? Well, again, it's not going to go away before the next fiscal year. So at fiscal year '25, when we get into budget discussions, we're going to reevaluate this. We're going to reevaluate the planner position. We're going to match it with a recurring revenue source. And should the building inspections decline, should, you know, like I said, the economy's cyclical. We've saw real estate sales begin to come down, but we've not saw the same thing with building inspections. We've not saw the same thing with building permits. They're continuing to increase, and they're continuing to place a substantial demand on this department that we do not want to trickle down to the contractor in Macon County. We want them to keep trucking. We want them to have uninterrupted service from this department. So as we pair this planner with a recurring revenue source, should those inspections decline, we have two individuals in this department that are currently eligible for retirement. And I've had conversations with one individual that will be retiring within one to two years. And at that time, should the number of building inspections decline, we'll have the option to eliminate a position to meet the increased demand and bring us back down to eight employees right where we, right where this department is now. So with that being said, to give you a comparison, remember I said that we had a 30% increase from 2018 to 2023 in the number of permits issued. The budget of this department in 2009 was 773,000, 2009 now, was $773,270. With the addition of this position, this budget of the department will be roughly $813,000. That's about a 5% increase in the budget of this department since 2009, and you've had a 30% increase in the number of building permits issued since 2018. So that just gives you some comparison of what we're doing here. And again, the planning and code enforcement budget, when you look at our neighbor, Jackson County, the budget for that planning and code enforcement in Jackson County is 2.24 million. So again, I go back to, do they do things differently? Maybe some things differently, some, but that just gives you a comparison of where we're at in the efficiency of this department currently. So to wrap up, Mr. Chairman, and I would also like to add, in 2010, I was the planner at that time, and we had 10 employees in that department in 2009, whereas we'll just be going to nine with the addition of this employee. So with all that being said, I think it makes sense, I think right now, we have an increased demand, and we've discussed this at budget time, but, you know, we were all anticipating things to level off or even begin to go the other way. They simply have not, so we have to take measures now, again, to avoid interruption to the building contractors and to keep this quarter billion dollar industry in Macon County moving without restraint. And so with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask the board to consider the addition of a planner position, to the reinstatement of a planner position, to the Building Inspections Department, and the accompanying budget amendment that will make that happen.
All right, gentlemen, thank you, Derek. What is the pleasure of the board?
I like, the motion Mr. Owen here, our county manager, just made, I make that into a motion.
The budget amendment is $69,718 for the record, $69,718.
Did you get that on?
All right, gentlemen, we've heard the motion. Do you have a second? I'll stick it. You were getting ready, did? I take mine back. You go ahead. All right, gentlemen, I have motion, second one. Is there any further discussion?
Gentlemen, I believe it's pretty self-explanatory. I think our role is to help keep the private sector on their feet and moving, and I think what Derek just explained explains the problems, the problems and the circumstances we've been faced with, so.
All right, all in favor, stick the five, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, Joe. Glad you're on board, brother. All right, gentlemen, under new business, item 11, item 11, CTE. Is that right?
Yes, sir. And as Mr. Strickland comes up, I'll pass out a sample of the letter of support, Mr. Strickland and Coach Brooks, that will be considered here.
All right.
Well, good evening. Thank you all for having me and adding us onto the agenda at such short notice. I have Josh Brooks with me tonight. He is the person who helps me tremendously with career and technical education. I always say that no one knows more about CTE at Franklin High School than Josh Brooks. He is the curriculum instructional manager. And last May, you all invited us out to speak to you about the career and technical education program at Franklin High School. And at that time, we were able to share with you about the 20 pathways that we were implementing this school year and the credentials that students are earning. And also, we talked to you about our aviation program that we were implementing at the state level. And then you saw the value in investing in career and technical education and saw how it can drive economic development and student participation in high school. As a result of that, when it was budget session, you also funded for us to be able to pay some teachers, some CTE teachers that have teach some additional courses during their planning period, which is a funding source that we're not able to pay for with our federal grant. And so as a result of that, we're planning to have 20 students who are in public safety too, who will be completing their program in the spring, and they'll be ready to be hired as 911 dispatchers. We also have 13 students who are enrolled in emergency medical technology, and they will be graduating to be basic EMTs. So that's a huge progress in just one year. So one of the things that happened as a result of that plan is we were asked by the Dogwood Health Trust to write a grant because they have an interest in economic development in graduating students with credentials. And as part of that grant, we talked about the plan for the Higdon property that you will also purchase to help support Macon County schools. We talked about the potential of the land lab there, and also the student-run enterprise, and all of the extra things that kids could be able to do to enhance our current program. And as a result of that, the Dogwood Health Trust awarded us $495,000. We, and we just found out about that. But the thing that, I mean, that's so incredible. And there is to help improve CTE staffing, publicity for CTEs so the public and parents and children know what's available, also career development plans for students and professional development. But the thing that's even more incredible than that is that the Dogwood Health Trust called and said, you know, we really think you have something more here. We'd really like for you, to be able to help you leverage additional funds. We have a special fund that we set aside for grant writers. They call it the leverage fund. And they said, if we can find the right grant for you, we would like to hire a grant writer for you, and we would like to be able to take this proposal that you have to the next level. And so things that are supposed to happen, happen. And so within a day or two, we found a federal grant that we were eligible for. It's the Perkins Innovation and Modernization Grant. It's here on this red side. And because of the support that you have put in place for us already, it makes us eligible to apply for this grant. One of the criteria is that we have matching funds. The matching funds cannot be from federal funds. They have to come from a local source. And so you have set us up nicely to be able to apply for this because you purchased the Higdon property for us. You also pay for one and a half CTE positions, and then you all And then, you also pay a two percent supplement on all of the CTE teacher's salary, the local supplement. So, we have that whole amount of money that you've provided, plus we have the four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the Dogwood Health Trust. Then, we had a meeting with our partners early last week to garner support. And when the Dogwood Health Trust saw the lineup of people who were supporting this grant, they called in the evening and said that they would support an additional hundred thousand dollar match to help us. We also have a partnership with Southwestern Community College. Part of this grant is to increase the college and career promise, the college courses for students in career and technical ed. And they have been paying for salaries of our welding teacher, our carpentry teacher, our automotive teacher, and they also have a liaison position that they pay. And those are all paid from local funds. And so, when you look at all of that over a five-year period, we have much more than a fifty percent match. We have almost a three million dollar match. And so, that makes us eligible to be able to apply for this grant. Originally, when we looked at it, we thought that we were going to look at a three-year grant, and we were going to apply for a three point five million dollars. But over the course of a few days and a lot of guidance from a lot of community supporters, we now realize that we are eligible for a five-year grant in the amount of four point eight million dollars.
Four point how much?
Four point eight. And so, what that will do is it'll enhance everything that we receive with the Dogwood Health Trust. It'll allow us to be able to put in infrastructure and programs and support for the farm-to-table land lab. It'll help us be able to increase dual enrollment for students, increase credentials, and it'll help us with the student-run enterprise. It is not a construction grant. It won't allow us to do any renovations. But one of the things that it will allow us to do with the Higdon property, it will allow us to contract with an architect, and that architect can help us to come up with a master plan for that property and all of the buildings that are on it. And then, also, the design of where we would want things to be put out. We'll also be able to ask for tuition for our students who are in the aviation program. We'd like to have set aside thirty thousand dollars each year of that grant so that we can help pay for the flight time for the students. We also recognize the importance of student internships, so we're asking for fifty thousand dollars a year so that we can pay one thousand dollar stipends to students so that they do internships. We are asking for equipment. Mr. Brooks can tell you all of the equipment. He's been getting the quotes for these things for us, so.
It's not limited to, to say the least, but, you know, a tractor, a skidster, robotics, things for the lab, things for automotive, for carpentry, for welding, basically anything that could be used hands-on, and especially things that could be used on that property over there.
And we also have a partnership to where we would reach out to our schools that are the K-12 that are in remote locations, so Highlands and Nana Hala. And what we would like to do is put out virtual reality curriculum there. An augmented reality curriculum, it's called Z-Space. And they are able to manipulate automotive, welding, health science using virtual reality. We have put in a lab at Mountain View Intermediate School. We'd like to invite you out to come and see that, where we're working on getting that going. You're going to look at it and say, oh, this is unbelievable. It's not unbelievable. It's exactly the way that it looks. So, you know, I can't really put in, cost-effectively put in an automotive program at Nana Hala with its small student enrollment, but I can put virtual reality out there for them. So, that really increases the opportunities for them there.
The other thing I'll mention about, if you've ever been to our aviation lab, and if you haven't, I would encourage you to see it. Those simulators are pretty realistic. But I'm talking to some of the farmers about things that we could do over there. They talked about possibly having farming simulators to where you could learn to use that equipment that you would have to use if you were in a small farm or even a big farm. Never really thought about it like that, but Mr. Huskerson actually was the one who talked about that. And so, that's other things that we could use this grant money for, to something realistic for those kids to look at and use to become more viable as they move forward.
And when Mr. Roland heard about this grant, he came and met with me. You've probably spent about five hours with me over the last three workdays.
Yeah.
So, you had an opportunity to come to our business advisory, which Mr. Shields is the chairman of. But you also got an opportunity to come out and see the students in action with aviation and give some input on the types of items that we should be asking for. And I really appreciate that, too.
What is our next move? Is it the due diligence piece?
Well, tonight, what I really am here to ask you for is, we have a great CTE program. With this grant, we're going to make it platinum. But it's a competitive grant. It's not something that we automatically get. It's not entitlement. And so, we have to have the strongest application possible. So, I would like to ask for you to approve for Mr. Roland to send a letter of support on behalf of the county commissioners in support of this grant. And then, I would also like for you to consider a resolution at the next county commissioners' meeting to support CTE programming in this grant. Did I say that right? I think so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as Colleen has said, I think, you know, with this grant, the CTE program is going to be able to do so much more in the leverage that they need to be able to apply. We're already, the county's already either contributed or is contributing the match for that grant. So, you know, moving forward, and the conversation Colleen and I had was, you know, what does this look like after the five years is over? What is the county still funding after five years? And, you know, as you heard her say, you know, the scholarships and the things through the life of the grant, you know, the equipment, you purchase the equipment, and that, you know, that's one-time expenditures. So, this grant's very capital-intensive rather than operation-intensive. It gives them tools and it gives them things rather than people and operating costs. So, from the county's standpoint, it's a win. From the school's standpoint, it's a win. From the student's standpoint, you know, the school and the students, it's a win. So, I mean, I can't really see a downside.
So, you said you wanted for Mr. Roland to write a letter of support from the county commissioners? What was the second part?
We'd like for you to do a resolution at the next county commissioners' meeting in support of career and technical education in this Innovation and Modernization Grant.
Is this the rec?
That's a sample.
Please correct the grammar in it, though. That doesn't look good coming from an educational. Have you read that?
I can review it again.
Please do.
Okay.
It says, person about what they are bringing to the table and how they support us.
Thank you for mentioning that. We'll definitely address it. That's the area where we're asking our supporters to customize what they can do for us. So, that probably should have been a personal conversation. I could see how you could misinterpret that. Probably not the best.
What should we do in this section? Is that where we need to spell out the things you mentioned, that the purchase of the Higdon property, the one and a half CTE, the two percent supplement? That's where we need to include that?
Yes, thank you.
I'll work out the details on that.
Yes.
I just want to say thanks for actively pursuing grants. We've talked about that for a long time, and you guys are doing it. So, thanks for being here tonight.
Now, the Dogwood's private, the Dogwood Trust.
Private, but what I'm saying is, they pursued this.
Yeah, the terror private.
Well, the Dogwood Trust is private. This Perkins grant is federal and it's competitive. So, it's not an entitlement like Title I or the CTE grant that we get from the state. This is something that you have to have, something that's innovative and different than everyone else has.
Okay, you have our blessing.
Our CTE program, like, how does that compare to, like, other schools around the state?
In regard to the number of program areas or percentage of students involved?
Program areas and just the quality of it, like, compared to, like, other schools in the state, like, where?
I have no hesitation in saying that if you brought the other twenty-eight high schools in western North Carolina and compared it to Franklin High School, if we're not the best, we're standing in the top three without a question. And if you take the number of students in our school and you take the percentage of those students that are involved in some CTE class, I think it was eighty-two to eighty-seven percent today. And the number of students that are obtaining credentials, we did that math today, too. Well, we had over nine hundred credentials last year. Those are industry-recognized, and that was four hundred and thirty-seven different students. So, over forty percent of our student body is earning credentials in one of those CTE classes. So, I'd have no trouble sticking my chest out and saying that we compete with anybody, including statewide. Actual husband to visit our campus and literally couldn't believe what they saw.
I can't believe it. I'll tell you what, you guys have my full support with what's going on in that CTE program. I think that it is incredible.
We don't need to motion anything on that, do we?
Well, I think it would be good for the record.
What can you guys do to get an instructor or somebody in the carpentry class back in Highlands? I called with a project the other day for the carpentry class from county property, and they said, we don't have a carpentry class. That's heartbreaking.
It is. When we advertised, that was a vacancy for a year. And so, we had one individual who came in and filled that position after Mr. Cashon retired. He came in for one year, and as you know, the construction industry in Highlands is very competitive pay. It does not compete with a carpentry teacher's salary. So, in order to do that, we'd have to have competitive pay for them. And so, that would require some local effort in order to do that. So, that is one barrier for with career and technical education, is you are asking people to come out of the working field that are out there working at a journeyman's rate, and we're asking them to come in and work at a teacher's salary. So, if that's really something that you're serious at looking at, you'd have to look at doing a competitive salary for that person, and that would have to come from local funds. So, that, I mean, we can look at what that average person's salary would be and put out a competitive salary, but there was no one who would apply for that. But we did have an opportunity to add the agriculture program up there, and the kids are living it. So, they have animal science one, animal science two. They already got the, what was it, beef quality assurance credential at the Macon County Fair. They also picked up pesticide. They're having horticulture one, horticulture two, and kids are enrolling in it. Another thing that happened with carpentry at Highlands is kids didn't want to take it. So, if kids don't want to take the class, it's hard to have a program. So, you've got to have kids who want to take it. You've got to have the economic development that says we need it, which we know we do. But then, you've got to be able to hire a teacher who's qualified. So, in order to do that, you've got to pay that person. So, that's something that you'd really have to seriously look at. And I think we would be willing to bring that on, but that would be additional funding.
Thank you.
The last Board of Education meeting in Highlands, the FFA did a presentation, and they did an excellent job. There are teachers that's involved in it, and I think she's in it one hundred percent, too.
She is. She's done wonderful things for being there since July.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen. We entertain a motion to authorize county manager to work with Mr. Strickland on...
Drafting letter of support.
Letter of support and resolution?
I'd like to make a motion on that, and remind me, get a second part. The resolution is the second part, right?
That'll be next one.
Oh, that's next one. All right. Well, I'd like to make a motion for county manager to approve this letter.
Second.
Got a motion, second, further discussion? All in favor, stick a fiber, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the support.
What about the resolution now?
That's next one.
Next one?
All right, gentlemen, consent agenda, need to make one correction on that. Under twelve D, if you'll scratch through the month of July and insert month of September. And thank you, Tammy, for pointing that out. We'll entertain a motion to approve the complete agenda unless, or the complete consent agenda unless someone has a particular item. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as...
Say it.
Got a motion as a second, begrudgingly. Hard to follow up after the next presentation on the planning to a spending number. Have a motion second. Any discussion, if not, all in favor, stick a fiber, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Appointments, we have three appointments to the Board of Health, and I serve as the liaison of the Health Board. And the three vacancies or the three candidates that we have, Ms. Ruth Stillwell, Dr. Matt Corbin, and Garrett Higdon, all very reputable, outstanding people who care mostly for Macon County. Board of Health approved these three, recommended them. And with that, I'll make a motion that we appoint the three names that are mentioned to the Macon County Board of Health. Got a motion second, any discussion? None heard, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. We need another closed session. Right?
Yes, sir.
All right. For...
You might understand this is a personnel issue under one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A five or six, hold on, let me get confirmation.
Thank you, folks, for being here tonight. We don't... We don't anticipate any action after the board, after the closed session. So, if you want to hang around, just say it's come out, that's good, but don't hang around expecting us to do anything. Is that an equity assessment?
Five and six.
Five and six?
One forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A five and six.
Who made the motion on second agenda?
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
All in favor, stick a fiber, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I?
Close that.